Good evening. We'd like to welcome everyone to the June 18, 2019 regular board meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education. If you would all stand for a moment of silent reflection. And the pledge salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any needed changes to the agenda?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nancy, second by Tom, all in favor. That's unanimous. First up is our consent agenda. It's that time of year, several things on there. Anybody have any questions? Have Tom look it over? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Tom, second by Darla, all in favor. That's unanimous. Any public participation, Cindy? No public participation tonight. We're right into presentation and discussion items. First up is Inspire with Jimmy Pagel.
Pagel.
Pagel. All right. You said that before.
Sounds innovative. Appreciate y'all allowing me to present tonight and I appreciate y'all bringing, allowing me to bring my son. He wanted to see where all the principals lived. That's what he told me on my way up here. All right. So, good evening, Dr. Bearden and our distinguished board, as well as Ms. Abbott. Thank you very much for helping me put our presentation on the computer this morning, or this afternoon. My name is Jimmy Pagel and I'm an assistant principal at Liberty Middle School. And I'm very excited to be here tonight to present my Inspire project. At Liberty Middle School, our mission is to create competent learners that not only care for, care and respect themselves, but care and respect others. I'm sorry.
Do we want a school bus? Want a school bus?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. This worked better when we practiced at my house.
Yes, you may. Yes, you may.
So, let me start over. At Liberty Middle School, our mission is to create competent learners that not only can respect themselves, but more importantly, can respect others. So when I began thinking about what I wanted to do for my Inspire project, I wanted to create something that would make, have a lasting impact on our students, but also our staff. I remember sitting at our leadership conference last year and one of our guest speakers said, "If students didn't have to really be in your class, would they show up to your class?" This statement had a profound impact on me moving forward. Also, as you can see, I have a rising kindergartner.
He's on.
He's somewhere running around here.
He's good.
But we have a rising kindergartner who will be in this county next year. And I wanted him to be excited about going to school every day. I wanted him to want to go to school, to see his teachers, not because he had to, but because his teachers made education fun, exciting, memorable, safe. Ultimately, I wanted his teachers to make him feel healthy, happy, and safe. I know when you guys think about your favorite teacher, I can probably guarantee it wasn't that standard of education that they taught you. I can probably best bet that it was those conversations about life, or the way that they made you feel, is the reason why they're your favorite teacher. So with those aforementioned points, the foundation of my Inspire project is incorporating SEL into our classroom on a daily basis, so to improve our students' attitudes towards education and learning, but most importantly, to create competent learners that care and respect themselves, but care and also care and respect others. So with that said, this is our SEL journey at Liberty Middle School. So what is SEL? SEL is the process which children and adults acquire and effectively apply the knowledge, attitudes, and skills necessary to understand and manage their emotions, also to set and achieve positive goals, feel safe at school, and to show empathy for others, as well as establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions. This is what we want SEL to look like at Liberty Middle School. All right, so as you can see, SEL's not about one more thing, or it's not about, um, excuse me, it's not about a program that is just canned. I apologize. It's about ongoing embedded work that's guided by strong empathetic school leaders that takes place every single day in our classroom. It's good. It's tier-one instruction. The, why SEL? The research about SEL is hard to ignore. The development of social-emotional skills in kindergarten leads to the higher likelihood of graduating on time, obtaining a college degree, and adult employment. It also lessens the chance of people or students substance abuse, bullying others, or getting into trouble with the law as adults. Because of these findings, and because of the future of my two beautiful sons, the other two-year-old that's not here, because it's dinnertime and he's hangry all the time, that's why my vision for this all-important work began to develop. So, my Inspire project consisted of three phases. Phase one was to develop what our definition of empathy education at Liberty Middle School would look like, and what empathy education looks like in our classrooms. Empathy is at the core of everything that makes our schools great and caring, and our teachers responsive, and our society civilized. And according to Harvard Business Review, empathy is one of the essential ingredients for leadership success and excellent performance. In a world full of selfies, and if you ever worked in a middle school, it's all about themselves, we found a huge need for empathy. The definition of empathy is the ability to understand the thoughts, feelings, and emotions of others. At LMS, we defined empathy as a "we", not "me" attitude, in that we care and respect others all the time. And our teachers and our staff model empathy continuously in their classrooms and in their interactions, as well as through our character development opportunities that we offer our students every day throughout the year. So what is empathy education? Empathy education is ongoing and continual focus at Liberty. We want empathy to be integrated and woven into everyday tier-one instruction. We want our empathy education to be meaningful and heartfelt. We want our students to adopt empathy competencies that they can use for the rest of their lives. Also, we want our lessons in our classrooms to focus on the emotional needs of our students and breed a culture of care and respect. So, with that said, phase two of my Inspire project consisted of me leading a group of instructional coaches to develop an SEL instructional framework based on empathy. The framework, as you can see here, is centered upon Michelle Borba's work, The Nine Competencies of Teaching Empathy. I'm not going to go into big definitions of which one is, but I'll just highly point on them. Emotional literacy, that's just simply the ability to read people's emotions. Moral identity, that's teachers working with kids about their inner value system. Perspective-taking, that's just understanding other people's way of life and what they do. Moral imagination, that's providing our students with books and novels about life and cultures of different people. Self-regulation, that's them, us teaching them how to control their emotions, and I wish I can do a better job by his son, but he's going into kindergarten. And then practicing kindness, that's so easy. Just, at our school, we have a simple phrase, "Be nice, dude." Empathy collaboration, it's working with others that are different from you. Moral courage, which I love this one, this might be hard, but we always tell our students to, if you see something wrong, say something. If you see a kid being a bully, let adult know so we can handle it. And then growing change makers. We want our kids to be the change that they want to see in the world. And it's our responsibility as educators to grow those change makers. Phase three, and this is the pilot part of our, my project, this is where, at Liberty Middle School, we had four different teachers that wanted to prove SEL in their classroom. This is their TEACs professional learning goal that they needed for their, to fill out for TEACs. And so, along with the instructional coaches that I mentioned earlier that helped develop the framework for empathy education, we worked with these four teachers to, using the Jim Knight's Impact Cycle and instructional coaching. And basically, what that looked like was, our teachers, the ones that we were coaching, did a survey at the beginning of last semester and asked simple questions to their students. And the questions were, and I will go into this data later, but, "I feel my teacher likes me. My teacher makes me feel he or she cares about me. My teacher encourages me to do my best. I feel safe in my teacher's classroom. I feel happy in my teacher's classroom. And my teacher listens to me." So after that survey, the teachers then videotaped a 20-minute lesson of themselves, and they also answered two questionnaires about that video, one about themselves, and then also about what they saw with their students. And then, based on the video, the questionnaire, and the survey results, the teachers identified an empathy educational goal that they were going to work on. And this is where the coaching part comes in. Our coaches worked with these teachers and shared strategies for that empathy goal that each teacher chose. The coaches provided resources and even modeled the areas of growth that their teachers identified they needed to work on. And then finally, the teachers implemented the practice that they wanted to work on. And the coaches and teachers made adaptations and planned next actions, what goal that was to be met. So the results of this pilot was pretty positive. The, excuse me, I'm sorry, I lost my notes. So the first question, "I feel like my teacher likes me," in the original surveys, it went from, increased from always 68% to 72%. The question, "My teacher makes me feel that he or she cares about me," increased from 63% always to 76% always. "My teacher encourages me to do my best," increased from 83% to 87% always. "I feel safe in my teacher's classroom," increased from 94% to 95%, which was huge. I know it's only one small, but feeling safe is, is so important. "I feel happy in my teacher's classroom," went from always 46% to always 56%. And then finally, "My teacher listens to me," went from 75% always to 83% always. So, as I mentioned before, SEL's not a program, and it's definitely not one more thing for our teachers to do. So our final phase of our SEL journey at Liberty Middle School, in all honesty, should be just the way we do things around here. Next year, we've already created an SEL team that will help with this charge of ongoing SEL in our classrooms. We will train our teachers on how to incorporate Castle's SEL competencies into their regular tier-one instruction, not just something we do on Wednesdays, but something we do every day. We will provide teachers with ongoing professional learning opportunities throughout the year so that they can really improve on their SEL opportunities in their classroom. We'll also provide SEL instructional coaching, while we talk about that pilot, to teachers that need it. And then finally, well, we also created a retreat center, like a wellness center, for our teachers and staff, that our counselors do mindfulness, to bring them all back to center. And finally, and most exciting, we're beginning our new chapter of SEL, developed, character development at Liberty Middle School. With the help of Jostens, yes, the yearbook company, and our awesome rep, Sean McCarthy, we have partnered with Mike Smith from the Harbor series to come to Liberty to kick off our new SEL movement called Everybody Matters. We cordially invite you, Dr. Bearden, and all board members to come to Liberty on August 16th, which is a Friday, to help kick off the beginning of just the way we do things around here at Liberty Middle School. Thank you so much for your time and your patience with my wonderful five-year-old, and I hope you guys have a relaxing and restful summer. Thank you very much.
Wow, that, it's, actually, I feel like I'm jumping in on something Wes is going to say, because I think, I love the way this is, you talk about it embedded throughout the day and throughout the classroom. It's not one more standard to meet, it's embedded throughout. And I know, Wes, you're probably going to talk about how much more our teachers just do than what we say. I'm going to let you carry that one, because I know it's something that's important to you.
Yeah, one of the things I've learned over the last couple of months is just how much is put on the teachers. And at Liberty, you guys do a great job. I mean, the way they connect with the students every day is just unreal. And so, to see that this was happening behind the scenes is pretty neat, because you didn't see that every day at the school. But I know you guys are doing a great job, and this is exciting, and it'd be interesting to see what the Harbor series brings to Liberty.
I'm excited too. We did seven mindsets for years, and our students said, our students, we listened to them, they said, "We want something new." And the Harbor series and Mike Smith is so relatable to our middle schoolers as well as the high schoolers. So we are just excited to partner with Jostens with this new endeavor of Everybody Matters.
Yeah, you said one thing, and I think I realized after being in this area for a long time, really trying to figure it out, it's not an easy competency that you teach. It's a learn, it's somebody has to get it. And so you said something about self-regulation. I think that's what we've done in school for so long, we kind of hope that kids get it. You know, a student will get the self-regulation and take care of themselves, but I think it takes that relationship, and then realizing that other people are there for them, before they can get that and be able to be safe to self-regulate. That's what I call integrity at the end of the day. It's what you do when nobody else is looking. And so it's trying to get that student to that place of happiness. And the empathy collaboration is probably, I might have to think on that a little bit, because it really, I think, is part of it. I've always used gratitude as one of those pieces, and showing it to each other, and something you have to do for somebody else. And so I see it starting to change and move, so it's a lot of good work. It's, you have to really sit and think about this stuff.
Oh, yeah. And it's really changed our hiring practices at Liberty. We really want to bring in those kids, teachers that you can tell just truly love kids and are kind, and really want to get to form those positive relationships. We can teach the content, we can teach instructional practices, but I can't teach you to like kids, but, you know, and so we just knowing that, that's who we're wanting to bring in, just those that really, truly love kids and want to form that meaningful, lasting relationship, want to be that favorite teacher, you know? That's what we, that's who we're bringing in at Liberty.
I think my favorite phrase you also said was "we", not "me." And I think that's something that we all, adults could use that as well. Kids doing their group projects, seems like middle school, especially eighth grade, they're doing all those group social studies projects, and if they can learn to work together as a team throughout their entire life, it's going to be such a benefit when they get a job.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Good project.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
That it? All right. I am going to step out, because I'm sure Jennifer is charging me by the hour. Thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have the coming Forsyth County Chamber of Commerce Workforce Development Partnership with Valerie Lowe, and I see Laura Stewart is with us as well.
All right, we'll be very brief, but we wanted to provide some information to the board, just as an update of things that we're working on in partnership with our Chamber of Commerce. So Laura and I are just going to kind of overview some highlights of things that, you know, we continue to work on as a, as a community, as a school district, in a partnership with the chamber. Most of you remember our report and our strategy session and planning that we did the last school year, which would guide career and technical education for the next three years. Part of that report identified four areas that we were going to really make a priority focus for our district, and those are listed for you on your screen. Priority one and priority four were about marketing and outreach and growing our partnerships for our career and technical education programs. And so in each of these different areas, we have some short-term strategies, and we had some long-term strategies, and this is from the final, pulled from the final report. Part of that involved growing our partnerships, better organizing our partnerships, and just assisting teachers with those day-to-day interactions with business and industry in the classroom that are very vital to the success and the continued growth of our programs, and just the overall experience that our kids graduate with. And so part of that involved us knowing that we needed to go back and really look at some areas of growth for us, and that was around partnerships, mainly just organizing, having a better approach to engaging the community and different businesses in our particular program. So we're focusing on priority one and priority four. You'll remember too, most of you are part of that planning process, we really looked at career tech in terms of, what were we doing well, what did we need to work on, and then what are some things that we want to be known for in terms of career tech? We are known across the state for our examples of partnerships in career tech. We're often asked to go into other districts to help them with that real-world partnership, so we're proud of that, but we're ready really to ramp that up. So we started having discussions with, with our teachers, with the chamber, with, with Dr. Bearden about, you know, where would we want to go next with our growth? A lot of this, and this excellence guide is what we use, and we also have a middle school version with our teachers, that tier-two and tier-three area of, you know, business and industry trips, post-secondary tours, just that engagement in your classroom. So this is a guide that we use really internally with our teachers to kind of benchmark their involvement with business and industry in their classrooms. So this was a guide that we started using. So one of the things that we said we were going to do as we worked through our workforce for Forsyth plan is, again, around our partnerships, just deciding, you know, how we wanted to grow, and, and so that's when discussions centered around maybe some shared responsibility with us, along with the chamber, to really ramp up those efforts. And so we've proposed with the chamber, really an investment impact on both sides, to have a shared position, where that position would really get up every day, thinking about how to better engage business and industry into the career tech classroom. It's something that we all do, it's something that our coordinators do from day to day, but you all know as well as I do, sometimes we're more reactive than proactive, just given constraints of time and caseloads of students that we're working with. And so these things that we've listed there, along with our programs that we, we have in place, that we have continued over the years, we feel like marrying all this with someone that would have a dedicated role in this area for us, will really help us in certain, certain organizational things that we knew that we needed to do, as well as just onboarding partners a little bit better, making them comfortable, jumping into a high school classroom, talking to them about their profession, and also help bridge the gap between our teachers and business and industry, because that's often challenging for a teacher, sometimes intimidating for a teacher. And so we have, we have continued to be that bridge for our teachers. So all these different areas is where we would feel like that shared position would be able to provide value for the school district. Something that we're doing, you all know, and you've been with us, different parts of the country, we've looked at different models, we've visited different schools in other states, but one of the models that we keep coming back to was what Nashville was doing, and that really launched them into doing professional training across the country for cities. And so we're going to bring the Pencil Foundation in to us next Monday, they're going to come down, and they're going to work for us for their full day, just talking about, you know, really refining our CTA partnerships, you know, where are we at now, and where do we want to go, just the initial stages, just getting partners in, onboarding them, and maintaining those relationships, and other things, just what we think that should be critical for this particular role, even down to finalizing a job description. So that work will continue next week for us, as we continue to kind of think through what this would look like. And Laura's going to kind of tell, from the chamber perspective, how that would tie into what they're doing.
Yeah, thank you, Valerie, and thank you, guys. This is really exciting for me. And many of you I get to work with on various projects and things, but this is really fun. And so, like Valerie said, you know, I think in a lot of ways, the partnership between the school system and the chamber has always been there. We work on several programs together, but I think the opportunity here is a next-level opportunity, is really having, like Valerie mentioned, someone very dedicated that's waking up day after day with that partnership in mind. It plays in very nicely to just kind of what the chamber has going on in our world, and some of you have been a part of that. So last year, the chamber worked with a consulting firm out of Austin, Texas, to come in and build an economic development plan for the county for the next five years. And that plan has all sorts of elements. The first element of that, speaking of partnerships, was to finalize and formalize a partnership organization. That is Forward Forsyth, you'll see the logo there on the slide. And that was a formal partnership dedicated to economic development between Forsyth County Government, the Chamber of Commerce, the Board of Education, thank you for representing us on, on that day when we cut that ribbon, Linear Technical College, and the Forsyth County Development Authority. So we started with that initial partnership to say, "We're going to take this plan, we're going to take the recommendations that were made in it, and make some strides forward into accomplishing that." And so what the plan gave us was an implementation matrix of various strategies and tasks all over the board, but certainly a huge chunk of that was workforce development-related. And so we took that matrix and pulled out any of those workforce development-related items, and that's really what, from the chamber's perspective, I used as Valerie and I kind of started to draft a job description. There were all sorts of things that those consultants had told us that we, as a community, needed to be working on. And like Valerie said, the great thing was, a lot of them are things that we already were, that you guys already were. But the idea of having someone full-time coming in and tackling those items, and going to the businesses and really forming a relationship with them so that they can bridge that gap, I think is really important. I know, we just heard a presentation about how much your teachers are doing, and I know that, that added task would be difficult to add on top of them, but someone who's able to kind of stay in that business space and just see how to relate to the educators would be really beneficial.
So we wanted to mainly just provide an update of kind of where, what we're working on, what we've been doing, and we'll continue to have discussions over the summer, and hopefully, and, you know, we can look to the fall to get something in place. But we've, we've been working, we've done the research, we feel like we'll learn a lot after we do a little bit more brainstorming with our Pencil Foundation, and then have a better direction of what we want to do in terms of growth of our partnerships.
And at the end of the day, this employee that will be hired will be a member of the chamber staff, but the costs will be shared between the school system and the chamber. And again, the intentionality behind the position is what I'm most excited about. I really think it's going to help us, as Laura said, really move that relationship forward and bring in more opportunities for our kids around internships, teachers around externships, bring expertise to our classroom. It's really going to take our college and career development a step up, I believe. And I know we've talked about this in the past, but I wanted to get an update, and appreciate this board's support and the chamber board's support in helping move this forward. I think it's really exciting.
I think, I think Laura also mentioned, it is, while it is a direct partnership between the chamber and the school system, it really goes beyond that. Choose Forsyth, the for Forsyth is with the Forsyth County Government, the Development Authority, and you, and it's, it's a bigger thing. It's the whole community working together, help get our kids some good jobs in the end, and that's really what it's about. And as our system continues to grow, we're going to be topping 50,000 students this year. We need a lot more people on the ground out there trying to help get those communications going with the businesses, so that's going to be very.
And Laura can speak to this better than I can, but I know around economic development, and you have prospective employers looking at a community, when they see a synergy like we have in Forsyth County, that leaves an impression and really helps in terms of recruitment. So, you know, we're excited about that, too.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Next up, we have some policy updates with Kathy Carpenter, JR, JBCAA, and JBC.
Doesn't get any more exciting than that.
I know. My name is.
JR, my favorite FERPA. Okay, so for the first policy, JR, I think you guys can pull that up on your screens. If you go under the FERPA section, item number K, we would like to add to directory information the local student identification number. And the reason for this addition is, if you have students with the exact same name, two John Smiths, the local identifier number helps yearbook companies and picture companies know that this picture goes with this John Smith versus another John Smith.
I wondered why, so that I'm glad you've mentioned. I wondered why, so that I'm glad you've mentioned that, the reason.
So, yeah, it, it's just kind of a common thing. The number is only meaningful to us, it, it has no other value to anybody else, so... But that would just help organize that information and make it simple for picture folks and yearbook folks. The next two policy updates are actually a result of legislative changes, and they relate to making enrolling for military families easier and simplified. So in policy JBCAA, we need to add a statement about students qualifying for proof of residency with military orders, official military orders. So that's where that statement comes from. And in conjunction with that, on policy JBC, we have to add required documents to include that the actual official military order would re, would satisfy one of the proof of residency requirements.
Okay, so like any policy, this will sit out there for, if anybody has any input, it'll be available on our front of our webpage. Also, I think she tweets it as well.
Her vote in July.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy, appreciate it.
Next one, school district organization, Dr. Bearden.
Yeah, policy AD is a new policy that we're presenting tonight. As you know, we're opening Pools Mill Elementary School in the fall of 2020, so we'll be needing to establish attendance lines for that school this coming school year. So this proposed policy addresses the process that we will use as we come up with those new school attendance line, lines. Clearly states our two primary objectives when we do that. One is to relieve overcrowding at existing schools, and number two, to functionally populate any new school. So that new policy covers that. And then for your information, I've also attached the administrative procedures. You don't vote on that, but I wanted you to see it so that you see the other factors that are considered when we look at new attendance lines. So again, this policy, unless you have any particular changes you would like to make, would, would be on the table for 30 days, and you'd actually vote on it in July.
Any questions? All right, that's good. Last but not least, policy KJ, advertising in schools, it's a revision of a current one, Ms. Crotlo.
This policy was originally created in 2002, which you know we've gone through a lot of change since 2002. And so in working with Hannah Samples, who's our communications facilitator, Hannah has handled a lot of the advertising in schools, and currently, right now, everything has to go through her for approval, and given what we have going on with our schools and the principals' relationships with their local communities, we really feel that it's best with the relationships that they've established, that we just give them some guidelines to follow, and that that way they can actually work with the distribution and solicitation of flyers. So you'll see before you, we went down and actually got more specific in the policy. We have the official partners in education in the school, public government agencies, school-sponsored camps, school support organizations and clubs, after-school youth organizations and programs affiliated with the school, school and district fundraising activities, and employee benefit programs. And then as well as that, we also expanded it to include signage and electronic video marquees. As you're aware, at the new high schools, we do have the electronic video marquee, and then we will be adding those if the high schools so choose to have those. And so this is too, just for consistency among our schools, about advertisement, product placement, where the advertisements can be placed as well. And our schools do work with Mr. Amerson in facilities, with the county sign ordinance, because this gives them a little bit more guidelines and consistencies among our schools as well. And then also at the request of our athletic directors, they wanted some uniformity whenever booster parents are going out and getting sponsorship, so I also included for you an application for advertising that right now that the athletic directors are reviewing and providing feedback to us about. So if you have any comments or suggestions, this will be placed on the website for the next 30 days, and we'll bring it back to you in July.
I like that it defines it, makes it real clear, sets the tone ahead. Very good. All right, thank you. LSC reports, Mr. Joey Perkel.
Have the annual local school council reports for you. You should have, have those and had those, so you should have been able to have, I'm sure you've looked over those, so I'm not going to read all of that to you. But just to kind of summarize, every year at the, at this time of year, at the end of the year, we ask local school councils to give us an annual report. And at that time, they can, basically what they do is they give us a summary of the topics that they've talked about, which we, you all have access to their minutes and attend a lot of those local school council minutes, so it's not like a lot of those things you're not already aware of. So I have a summary of the common topics that elementary, middle, and high schools all discussed this year through, through their local school councils. They all met their minimum of four times, most of them meet more than four times, but they have to meet at least four times a year, and I've stated that for all three. And another thing for, with their local school council, with, at their annual report, they have to, at that point, if they have any recommendations for you all as a board, they provide those at that time. So, and again, I'm not going to go through and read all those recommendations to you, that would take probably a good 30 minutes, but you can, you can see elementary recommendations, we have recommendations from Chattahoochee, Coming Elementary, Johns Creek, Kelly Mill, Settles Bridge, Shallow Point, and Silver City. Middle school recommendations, the middle schools that had recommendations were DeSanna Middle, Liberty, Little Mill, Alton, Pony Grove, and South Forsyth. And the high school recommendations were from Forsyth Central, Lambert, and West High School. And as you can see, those recommendations range from facilities to HR, to teaching and learning, technology, so safety, so they touch a lot of different departments. So what I am in, now in the process of doing is, because I know that, that you all as a board will respond to all of those recommendations, so I will gather all of the information that you need and that will enable you to respond to those recommendations. I'll get that information out to you. You all will have an opportunity to look over it, let me know, you know, what you think, what you, what you need done, and then we will craft the responses based on your input to respond back to the local school councils.
All right. Just one question, the, the highlighted portion in the middle school, was there any significance to that? There was a few areas.
No, the only significance to the highlighted part is because it's, because I list, I list the recommendation just as, as the local school council submits it. So there was a lot of verbiage in there, so I highlighted, basically, this is what they're asking for.
They're looking for.
So that it would be easy, so it would be easy for you to go through all that and say, okay, this is, this is basically what they're asking for.
Well, I think the good news is, some of the things that were in there are already in the works, like purchasing Chromebooks. We've already, one of the schools, I'm trying to see which one that was, DeSanna Middle, asked for more Chromebooks, and we continue to buy those year after year, so that is good. So there are things in here, and do you want to touch on the maintenance project?
Well, with, with our new, are you talking about with the new facilities? Well, our new facilities officer comes on board. One of the things he'll be tasked with doing is coming up with a, coming up with a project list to submit to you folks sometime in the fall on things we want to get done over the next couple of years. He's currently working with Bill on that right now, and so we'll bring that forward in a few months.
So I think some of these could be.
So some of these may be very well addressed in that.
Yeah, or in the works. All right, so thank you for working through all those.
No problem. All right. Thanks, Joey.
All righty. Now, they, good, even more exciting stuff. Mr. Lenny, he's ready. Construction update. Those are some good pictures.
Good evening. Well, fortunately, construction is rapidly progressing on 12 schools, along with an additional nine elementary schools undergoing the security vestibule renovations. So effectively, we're working on, you know, over half the campuses in, in the district. So starting with our high schools, this is an aerial view of East Forsyth High School with the overlay of the site plan. So if you recall, to give you the, the frame of reference, this is Jodlem Down Road. Groundbreaking ceremony was here looking in this direction. So some of the highlights of, of where we're at, this photo was taken a week ago, and literally since then, foundations have been placed in this area. Everything that you see in brown, right, is cut and fill. So work is taking place in, this is a 90-acre site with cut and fill occurring in approximately 80 acres. We've run into a couple of challenges, and I've, as I've said over the past six years, the single biggest risk that, you know, we have as developers is geotechnical conditions, underground conditions, being contaminated soil, rock, unsuitable soils. So in this particular case, you recall, we do have a sunken gymnasium about 14 feet from grade, so everything is on building pad for the main building. We have experienced some weathered rock, which is better, less dense than blast rock, less compensable, meaning less expensive for us. So we're working that, through that challenge currently in the gym basement as we foresaw, but still there. Secondarily, and to a greater extent, you'll see this area is still in green, right, which means we haven't yet excavated it. So the reason why is initially, even in the pre-design phase, we took geotechnical boreings, but when it's 90-acre site, you just can't take boreings everywhere. So we zeroed in on what we thought might be a challenge for us with rock over the past two weeks, putting a geotechnical rig in the risk area. So the culmination of that is what the geotechnical rig did explore and determine is we've got an approximate 20,000 cubic yards of blast rock in that area. Because we found it very early in the process, we can react intelligently, cost-effectively, so the plan just developed over the last couple of days still needs to be vetted, is we're going to be raising this area of the football field and parking approximately four feet. When you raise that, that really means you're excavating less, and that cut-fill material was going to go to the baseball softball. The bottom-line effect is we save approximately $1 million and a half. The slope has increased about 10 feet between softball and the parking football area, but keep in mind, this is a 30-acre site, that you do lose the slope. So long story short, we think that's a very cost-effective and maintains the schedule and progresses East Forsyth High as it should. You see a little bit of what I'm describing. It's hard in the aerial views to capture the undulations, but again, this is where the groundbreaking ceremony took place, looking in this direction. This is where all the foundations, you see the building pad is already flat, foundations are already placed here, the gym is in this area where the equipment is, and the knoll that I referenced is this off to the right-hand side, if you recall that. But it's parking, so it's non-critical path related to the schedule of what we've got to do to get done in time. This elevation is all the way from the back, so groundbreaking ceremony here, 90-acre site, we're all the way in the back here by softball, to give you a feel for the knoll that I'm referring to in this area. Any questions on east? The others are much simpler, I can go through those a lot quicker. This, an obvious rendering of Central High School, I did that to kind of give you the scale, so this is the new stadium, sports lighting already in place, the new concessions, restroom building well underway, as well as the locker room, fieldhouse expansion. This is a good aerial view, and I don't think we, we really kind of glanced over those six artificial turf fields we've done. Not only functionally are they great, like you've heard, but just aesthetic, that's a nice view of that. Again, the sports lighting already in place, foundations in place, and, and all this underground takes just so long to work through. The superstructure that you'll see of the grandstand starts in mid-July, should be done the end of August. So the, the wow factor, the pop, for this particular job, that happens a lot quicker than all the tough work that's underground.
And those four light poles will light the whole stadium.
Well, yeah, along, you've got.
That is amazing.
Lighting from, well, it, it's new and improved lighting, we do have lighting on the other side still from the existing. It's, it's much higher, it's much brighter.
Did you have to build that backside up?
Yeah, there's a retaining wall all along this fence that came up probably about 20 feet. It was a huge drop-off before.
It's pretty.
Yeah, thanks, nobody notices those kind of things. It's like, how come you're not further along? That's why.
Well, we saw you doing it that day when we were at the Olympics, yeah.
So this, it, now it has the roof on, and again, to make the deadlines, these pictures are in general two weeks old, so if you went out there today to make, you know, the board pending, give you, give it to you a week in advance. So that roof is on, the CMU is complete for the locker room in here. So, yeah, the athletic department, real excited out at Central. Similarly, nice view of the South Field for South High School concessions restroom. They just started a week right after school evacuated, and just, these older campuses are like spaghetti with all the site utilities, so we worked through that. CMU is installed for that, and then baseball, similar concessions restroom addition.
I'm going to ask, what's CMU?
I'm sorry?
CMU, what does that stand for?
Concrete masonry units, the masonry block.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. After all these years, we should know that, that word.
So some of the other projects that didn't have the photos, the parking deck, so fortunately, if you recall, we initially were looking at a December opening. Because elevator and finishes are currently in progress, we feel comfortable moving that up to September, with the goal being, if it goes right, within the acceleration continues, we could open that, hopefully, not, the commitment is September, the goal is open by first day of school. Moving to Academy for Creative Education and Forsyth County Performing Arts Center, design progressing well with the intent to procure contractor in October to move forward. West Forsyth High School, I'll say there's really two critical components. One is the obvious 20-classroom addition, the other was all the work that needed to happen this summer for the mechanical tie-ins, the electric tie-ins to support the new building. Fortunately, we're well ahead of schedule related to that, just in these past three, four weeks, so there won't be an impact when the students return August 1st. The other ones we didn't talk about are the Performing Arts Center renovations, well underway at North, Central, South, audiovisual, electrical upgrades in progress, as, as well as the screens and new seating fabric. Moving then to the elementary schools and middle schools, you know, a picture's worth a thousand words, right? So it was just a few months ago, we had the Pools Mill groundbreaking. This photo was taken a week ago, and if you went out there today where you see the roof kind of started in that quarter section, that roof now is 80% complete. That's how fast and productive with great quality that job's moving.
Even with the rain we've been having, hasn't then been a bit of a headache at this stage?
Well, the, you know, the beauty is, they got the slab-on-grade in and all the earthwork and site work done. So then, when it rains, it's hitting concrete or the roof, and it's not as impactful, which is, you know, long story short, why we really try to procure this next group of projects in the fall so we can get site work done before winter weather arrives. Same concept, you try to schedule it to take win, you know, weather will happen, but you try to strategically schedule that to be at stations and phases in the job where it's less impact. So this is the back view, looking at the playing field, looking up, the screen would be the building. So it's a, a large site, pretty site. Another fortunate, really progressing extremely well, this is the Chestery re-roofing project. If you recall, over the years and phases of the additions that the school has undergone, we've had multiple roofing types, which creates a challenge. To summarize it, the center section is moving extremely well, and the, the challenge there is that center section, the roof does need to come off and get put back, so that creates exposure. Because of that exposure, it was critical that that work got done prior to students returning, and, and we're well on our way to achieving that. Given a change in methodology, the wings now have a roofing system where we simply insulate and put new roofing on top of that, so that will take place without impacting existing operations in the fall. So that was one of those tricky projects that fortunately is progressing extremely well for us. The other middle school, elementary schools that I didn't have photos for and mention, Elementary School 23, again, property acquired, still going through due diligence. Elementary School 23, again, property acquired, still going through due diligence to close on that contract. The safety, security, entry vestibules, I think in the past we mentioned, we really want to do those in two phases, the first phase of the first nine elementary schools, really consisting of hollow metal frames, glass doors, get those done prior to the first day of school, and do the other nine during the fall session. Then that would leave Silver City, the site work we're doing somewhat similar to what we did at South High School, driveway, parking lot modifications, grading is complete, site utilities underway, with the intent of base and paving next month. And the other project would be Hill Center G nets, the restroom additions, modifications, concrete masonry units, the masonry is underway and MEP roughing is in progress. So we're really progressing well across the district. Any questions?
Just like old times. You get a lot of mileage on that truck you're driving, I'm guessing.
Yes.
All right, thank you so much, that's good stuff. All right, Chris Greiner, Finance Report. You can make it exciting.
I will try. All right, let's see, first of three, see? It'll be up here a while. See, I did try this before we started, it took a second earlier, too. There we go. All right, you have before you the financial statements as of the end of May, first page, our cash at the end of May, see down at the very bottom, a little over 82 million. Last year, this time, we were right around 79 million, so again, tracking well there. If you see, when we get to the investments, you'll see about 50 million of that was invested, we invested another 10 million first few days of this month, so that's not reflected, so we've got almost roughly 60 million of that 82 million invested. The 22 million does earn a little bit of interest, but not as much as Georgia Fund One or the US Treasury, so the majority, all of it earns interest, the bulk of the 60 is what's earning a little over 2%. So revenues as of the end of May, you can see down at the very bottom, 94%, this will start to take better shape when we get to the end of June. Property taxes, we'll talk, avalorum taxes, we'll talk a little bit about that when we get into the budget recap. We've always hit close to, if you do a five-year trend analysis, we hit about 99%. You're never going to get 100%, some years you may. What you're doing is you're saying the current year tax digest, we collect, say, 96, 97%, the other 2% may be delinquent taxes from previous years. So when we talk about next year's budget, we built in 99%, we didn't do 100% like we've done in the past, because if you look at the trend data, it's about 99% every year. So where that ends up, you'll see we're short 2.9 million right now of budget. I think we'll end up closer to less than 2 million before it's all said and done, I just can't really say till we get June, and also, some of July's collections actually count towards the previous fiscal year. So we'll, when we get to June, we'll have a much better picture on this. The only one that's probably going to be under on all this would be the avalorum taxes. Intangible taxes are coming in much stronger, we talked about that briefly, almost 500,000 this month for June. We'll also get to count July, because it's actually June collections, so we'll end up over on intangible taxes, real estate transfer taxes, we got 200,000 this month, so we're already over there. I'm not going down each line item, but avalorum tax, I mean, the title avalorum tax will end up over there as well. So really, the only one is avalorum taxes, and we can, we can talk through that more, but when you do see the budget for FY '20, keep in mind, we did a 99% collection rate, which is probably more in tune with what we've collected. So I think it's a little bit more conservative for FY '20. In years past, we've had other revenue sources that kind of made up that difference. This year, we're probably just going to fall a little short on that.
So when you run the numbers, when you do the budget, you take what it should be, and then you really just do 99%?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, what we do is take the tax digest times a 17.3 mils, minus the 2.5 percent collection fee we paid to the-
That.
Tax Commissioner's Office, and then do 99% after that.
Okay.
That's how I do it.
Did you know that?
So that's, that's how we, we get to that number, and you will see in the FY '20 budget, I'll touch on it, that's where we're at. Look at expenditure, the next page recaps our expenditures, 92.44%. Some of these encumbrances, I mentioned, will fall off as we, June will be a much better picture on that as well. Some of these are just where we put in a PO at the beginning of the year, say fuel, we estimate what it's going to be, we typically are under budget on fuel, we very rarely ever go over budget on fuel. So when you see maintenance and transportation maintenance operations, some of the maintenance operations repairs that we budget on a little bit on the higher end, and they'll come in a little bit lower as well, and some of that's energy cost as well. So I feel like we're in good shape on expenditures. This budget here, if you look at the total revenues minus the total expenditures, and we don't have that number on here, I realize today, we probably need to add down the bottom what that net number is, it's roughly 2.5 million that we still think that will. When you look at the FY '20 budget, I was a little bit more conservative, I put roughly 2.2 million as the excess for FY '19 revenues over expenditures, and we'll see that in a minute. I really felt like we were going to hit right in there, once we, all this, but we'll have a much better picture of this in June and then July as well. So, next slide, debt services, cash balance at the end of May is a little over 41 million. Our next payments due August 1st, that's strictly an interest payment, about 10.5 million, so we're in great shape to make that payment. Keep it in mind, the February 1st payment is our big payment, I think that one's close to, I should have looked it up, around 35 to 40 million when you do principal interest. So we'll have splice collections until that point, so that balance will continue to grow, and also, as property taxes come in with the debt service millage rate, that number will also grow. Investment analysis, I've kind of went over most all. First two columns of the general fund, you have the 2018 bonds. As you noticed during Tom's report, that number's going to start going down, 120 million very quickly. East Forsyth's going to start doing a lot of big draws as that construction process starts, so along with other projects, so that 129 will not be there much longer. The plan on that is to do the second half of the bond issue, probably middle part of next year, and that'll, just looking at timing of cash flows and where we're at, and that was the original plan as well. We'll start having additional conversations with city group to kind of start planning that out for next year. One good thing is interest rates are great right now, and everything that we've read, that's going to continue on into next year and probably lower rates, so we're in great position to borrow. That's, that's, that's very good. The rest of these, we still have the, a little bit of money on Alliance, most of that's going towards the finishing of the parking deck. Splice four, that money's allocated, it's just slowly being spent at this point, and then, of course, Splice five is our collections, and then we've got the majority of that invested in treasuries right now. Great report on Splice five for the month, three, almost 3.5 million, which was 7% higher than last, last year, same time. Continuing to, the monthly average continues to track, you know, go upwards, we're almost at 3.3 million now, which is excellent. I mean, that's, that's, it's a very positive trend. School balances stayed pretty consistent, we're a little over 10 point, almost 10.3 million if you add them all up. Last year, this time, we were about 9.3, but we've, of course, added, you know, two schools this year as well, so. I know that was a lot, if y'all have any questions.
What do they do over the summer? Do they just, what happens around summer, when they get to the July time, is it just kind of carry it, or?
What we do is, we've already turned on purchase orders for next year, so a lot of schools will start ordering in July, or toward the end of June, first part of July, so they'll start spending that money, so it'll start going down, and then once school starts back up the collections, they'll start coming back in.
All right, any questions on the Finance Report? All right.
Thank you.
I guess you might as well just stay right here, because we're moving to action items in our final budget approval for fiscal year 2020.
Right, let me get this one pulled up. I'm going to go over the changes from the initial budget presentation, which there's only three changes, other than, they're all, two on the revenue side, one on the expenditure side. Revenue side is definitely very positive. So we'll look at the general fund overview, down at the very bottom, I'm going to focus on that bottom section. Beginning fund balance, of course, this year's beginning fund balance, FY '19 revenues over expenditures is what I addressed while I gave, if you look at it now, we're at about 2.5 million, I feel like we'll probably be closer to 2.3 million. So that's the increase you see there, so that would give us our estimated fund balance ending this year. When we presented this last time, we were at 1.3 million, tax digest came in, we thought at that time it was going to come in much better. It got tweaked a little bit since then for the exemptions, still much better than the initial numbers we received, so we felt like we're going to be 3.5 million over for FY '20. So that would get us to an ending fund balance of a little over 72 million, 15.03% of operating expenditures. Our goal is to stay at 15, barely over, but we're there. So we're in great shape, we feel good. The digest, as I mentioned, is at 99%, we factored in that 1% kind of based on that trend data, so there is room to grow there. If you go back two or three years ago, we actually collected it out 99.4%. So there is potential that that 3.5 million might be a larger number, I feel like that's still a very conservative budget. So the only, that change was made with the tax digest, QBE went down like $400. What they do is they always project our QBE number.
$400?
$400. They always project it, send us a spreadsheet, then they actually do it in the system, and it's always different. I think it's rounding, it's the only thing I can figure, so it's $400 less. The only expenditure we added to this was there was one software renewal that got left out of the initial budget, it was a little over 55,000, 55,750.
55.
That's the only expenditure change you'll see, and it's one that we need to renew, it's on the instructional side, it just got left out of the initial budget presentation, so I added that back in. Only other thing on this, unless y'all, nothing changed on any of these slides, if you go to the general fund revenues, you'll see the tax digest portion down at the very bottom, and again, you'll see net available revenue at 99%. So compared to last year, what we budgeted, we're at 7.68% increase on property taxes.
Okay.
If you look at the five-year tax digest history, you're going to see 8.63% growth, but you got the 2.5% you had to factor in, plus the 1%, so when you start doing all those manipulations, you end up at 7.68.
So not as extreme as it was, last year was it, year before, so it's kind of balancing out a little bit?
It is, yeah, yeah. I mean, still a very, the digest continues to, I mean, it's not quite as large an increase as last year, but it's almost the same, and we'll talk about that when we get to the millage rate discussion.
Okay, so with that, I recommend approval of the FY 2020 budget.
Is there a motion to approve the budget? So moved. Motion by Nancy?
Second.
Second by Tom, all in favor? That's unanimous. All right, next we have the tentative millage rate adoption.
Right, tentative, that was, yeah.
Yes.
Get this pulled up, we did receive the final digest from Ms. Kirkpatrick last Wednesday. So we do have a final digest that will be submitted, we went through the process with the, with the Tax Assessor's Office to get all the notices ready. Our recommendation and what the budget's built on is that the MNO millage rate stay at the same 17.3, where it's been the last five years, debt service stay the same at 2.418. If you do the rollback calculation, the MNO millage rate would be 16.59, debt service would be 2.319. The overall digest for the entire county, or for the school, just for the school system, grew a billion dollars from last year. 52% of that is reassessments, 48% is new growth. The rollback fact, and that 1 billion is the same, it grew from 17 to 18, it's almost identical, it's off a few, a few hundred dollars. The rollback is, is based on the reassessments, so 48% of that billion dollar, or 52%, I'm sorry, of that billion dollar growth was reassessments, that's how the roll, the rollback doesn't factor in any new growth at all, it's strictly based on those. So when the notices go out, it'll show a property tax increase, if the 17.3 is approved, of 4.28%. Keep in mind, last year, we were a little over 6% increase, so that, that piece has come down, so.
I'm glad you break it down, because the growth part is something that we hit, Ms. Carpenter gave us some data, or talked to us about some of the numbers, the number of students that she's enrolling on a daily basis this summer, so we know the growth is going to continue to go there, and we'll probably end up hitting another, what, 1,700, 1,800, usually students each year, so those come along whether there's reassessments or not, so.
Yeah, and if you think 48% growth is, that's, I mean, it's about the same as last year, that's, that's tremendous growth over a year, I mean, you're talking with a digest growing a billion dollars. So basically, the value of a mil increased a million dollars, so if you want to look at it from that perspective, so. If anybody asks you, what is the value of a mil, it's about 12.6 million dollars, so.
And just a reminder, and I know the board knows this, you know, our budget's 90% people, a big part of our budget this year was to make sure we were keeping pace with cost of living adjustments for professional staff, as well as our non-certified staff, which I'm really proud of, so with that, I am going to recommend tentative millage rate approval for FY 2020, as listed, 17.3 for MNO, and debt service at 2.418.
All right. Is there a motion to attentively adopt our millage rates to keep them the same that they were last year?
So moved.
Motion by Tom?
Second.
Second by Darla, all in favor? That is unanimous.
Yeah.
And it's on the screen, but just as a reminder, I think we should say it publicly, we do have to, we're required to have millage rate hearings, so those have been scheduled July 8th at 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM, and then July 16th at 5:00 PM, and then a final approval will be at the 6 o'clock board meeting on the 16th.
Yep, and we will advertise on June 30th, we have to beat a seven-day window on each one, and I've confirmed all this with the Assessor's Office. So June 30th, we'll run the five-year history of the digest, along with the first notice, July the 7th, we'll run the second notice, which will be for that, the third and final meeting. So, and like I said, Dennis and I at the Tax Assessor's Office have worked through all that, we have all the notices ready to go, so we'll get all that prepared.
I mean, it works out not being the holiday week, it was a little easier for quorum on those odd dates, so.
Yeah, and that worked, worked well with the, with the Tax Assessor's Office, what they'll do is, once we have all this and Dennis gets the final paperwork, they'll submit the digest to the state and get it certified, we'll be, we'll be good for this year.
You don't have to rush for the county BOC meetings anymore, and they'll be on Tuesday, so that helps as well, you don't have to rush it over.
Yeah, they were, he was, the timeline we presented was fine with him, so, yep. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Academies of Creative Education Site Approval Update with Mr. Tim Amerson.
With the submittal of the Academies of Creative Education Preliminary Plan to Georgia Department of Education, they've asked us to go back and revisit the site for the new educational facility. The original site evaluation was done 1997, so we have gone back and completed a new environmental site assessment, risk hazard analysis for the site. We'd already completed updated surveys and some other geotechnical exploration for the actual engineering work. So what you have for you tonight is a new application for the Board of Education, Academy of Creative Education, and future Performing Arts Center site approval. So I'd like to request Dr. Bearden.
Recommend approval?
Are any questions before, I mean, curiosity, did anything change?
No.
No?
We still have a cemetery to north, farm to the east, and just a couple shops right below.
We're just 22 years older.
A little more traffic on Highway 9.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the site update?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Tom, a second by Nancy, all in favor? That's unanimous.
Thanks, Tim.
That's a different one. School Board Operating Guidelines, I guess I'm reading that one. That was something we had talked about, I'm trying to remember when that conversation started.
Retreat in January, well, we really started getting into it in January retreat.
Yeah, and, yeah, we did have our training, and we asked them to give them a copy of what they were using, because we kind of wanted to modify what we had seen and kind of put in writing. This does mirror the policy, our ethics policy, that we sign it or reevaluate each year. I think this is a good way to just kind of put the basics in, we've got one new board member, but I think it's really good for existing board members to remember how we like to operate professionally, and I think it's very detailed, I don't think we need to read the whole thing, but I think this is, we had a nice draft, we had, each had an opportunity to put some input, is everybody happy with the final version?
I've got a couple, if you want to recommend it, first I've got just an update-
Sure. Recommend approval of School Board Operating Guidelines.
Shall we get a motion first? It's a motion by Nancy?
Second.
Second by Tom, and some discussion.
I was just looking at, I know the people here don't have an idea of what we're talking about, but like, like our number one was, and their example was number 15, and we put it number one, it said, "Students' interests come first."
Yeah.
That's what we're all about, and it's like, don't spring surprises, communication, follow the chain of command, all the sort of guidelines that we do, but we just wanted to have it in writing. If you look at number eight, we changed it to, "The school district governance team will set clear goals for the district." Well, that's not really the procedure of what we do. I think the board creates, we create our goals for ourselves that align with the district's strategic plan, but then the governance team with the district leaders actually goes through that whole strategic planning session to set the clear goals. And like I say, I think we, I think just from when we talked about it initially to what we're at, our discussion, like I say, it's when, how it's written here, we will set clear goals for the district, I think that just kind of says, you know, the board up here, we're going to set them, you know?
Yeah, that's right.
And that's not really what we do, that's not how we operate.
That is kind of a good point. Did you have a suggested verbiage?
Well, that's, I just said, like I said, I said, "The, the board will create goals for themselves that align with the district's strategic plan." The- for themselves that align with the district's strategic plan, the school district governance team, which we call ourselves, the board and the superintendent, and district leaders will set clear goals for the district.
I do like that.
I think that's how we operate, I think it's, um...
I like that change. Do we need to do that in a form of amendment or just note with that change?
Make an amendment.
Make an amendment?
Yep.
Nancy, do you wanna make a motion to?
Well, is there, was there something else you were gonna bring up, or is that the only one?
Um, one other thing, I, if you look at number five, um, this is only collective decision-making process. The school district governance team will support decisions made by the board and/or the administration, administrative team, once a decision is made, we will support the majority decisions. Uh, just an example came to mind, like we, last year, we presented about the foreign exchange students. And to me, that came from the administration team and we decided to put that off for a year. So to me, this is contradictory, again, how we operated last year. So, I mean, we could just take it, we could just take that part out, it's like, we, we make decisions as the board, like we'll, like this year, we approved it, and then we, even if somebody disagrees, if two of us disagreed, I think what we're trying to say is, we will support the majority of the board, even if we don't agree with one of the decisions, we'll say.
But it says once a decision is made.
Yeah, they just recommended a policy, they weren't necessarily saying it.
Not as a recommendation, but with the decision wasn't made, I think it means that once the decision is definitely made, then we will support.
Well, you could just, you could just stop it at own the collective decision-making process, period, and then just delete the rest, if that speaks to what you're talking about.
Well, I just thought that foreign exchange student example went against, you know, 'cause to me, the administrative team, again, we didn't, we don't really even describe, say who that actually is, brought that, they'd made a decision, I mean, to bring it forward and, and what was, we're planning on doing, what we as a board said, well, it was not good timing, let's put that off for a year.
When we say administrative team, do we mean cabinet, or it could be beyond them, or is it pretty much just the cabinet? Should we change the word and say cabinet, or just keep it administrative team?
That's up to you, I, I mean, again, if the intent.
If the intent is that board members are going to own the collective decision-making process, maybe that's all that needs to be said.
Yeah, you could also probably just leave that last sentence, we will support the majority of decisions, just for clarity.
Okay.
You could take out.
Have those two sentences.
Yeah, take out the middle one.
Yeah.
So just to leave the?
Would you be okay with that, Nancy?
Yeah, that's, I just, like I say, I just thought this was against, you know, it was contradictory.
We'll leave the first sentence and last sentence as is and just strike out the middle, because that speaks to the intent of what this is trying to accomplish.
Exactly, that's what we're trying to say, is that just whatever decisions are made.
That's fine.
That we'll stick with it.
So Nancy, do you wanna make a, a motion for an amendment with?
I make motion to make those two amendments, and if Sandy needs, you know, the clarification or the exact wording, I can give it to her.
I will second your amendment. We'll start with a vote on the amendment first, everybody in favor of the amendment? That is unanimous, we'll go back to the main motion, which was the guidelines in general, and we already have a motion and a second for that, so all in favor? That is unanimous again.